We're going to go ahead and call the special meeting for February, May 11th to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Edgar.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kusumoto.
Here.
Councilmember Chirko.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Okay, so this agenda is broken up into three different areas: discussion, closed session, and consent. What I'm going to do, mainly because I'd like to be able to get our staff to be able to get out of here at a decent time, I think we're going to go ahead and take on the discussion item first, go through that, and then we'll go into closed session, and then after that, we'll come out and finish the consent calendar. Everybody okay with that? Okay, good. So let's go ahead and start with the discussion item. First item on the agenda, focused organizational assessment implementation, city manager.
He's checking his.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Well, since we're rearranging the order of the agenda, I'm going to get the consultant on the phone.
Sure. So, everybody in the audience, I guess Wendy, probably would make sense, I could go ahead and open it up for public comment. If there's anybody in the audience for this section, for discussion items, I'll open it up for each one before we go into closed session and before we go into consent calendar. But if there's anybody in the audience that wants to talk about anything within the jurisdiction of tonight's agenda specifically, please let me know. Anybody have any public comment? All righty, I'll go ahead and close public comment. And I guess we'll wait just a minute, we're going to call the consultants that actually prepared the organizational assessment, so if you're wondering what we're trying to do here.
Alan?
Yes.
Hi there, sir, how you doing?
I'm well.
Okay. So, I guess city manager, to be able to go through this staff report, why don't you give a little bit of a backdrop? And then Alan Pennington is on the phone, who is one of the principals at the consulting company that actually put together the staff report. And then Alan, if you've got a question or a concern directly, just ask for us to acknowledge you. And if not, if you're listening to this, we're just going to go and try and facilitate through this meeting, and if we have questions, I'll make sure we address it to you directly.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Appreciate you moving this up on the agenda. And we have our consultant from Matrix Consulting Group on the telephone to help answer questions and move this item along. So I'll just give a brief background. This was, this, what is on your agenda tonight is an organizational assessment that was completed originally at the request of the Budget Standing Committee a little over a year ago. We have a number, and have had a number of vacant positions, both in the Recreation and Community Services Department and in the Development Services Department that we've kept vacant. The Budget Standing Committee wanted to look at a combination of trying to provide ongoing outstanding service to the public while at the same time looking at the possibility of eliminating many of these positions and reorganizing in the most efficient manner for both the Recreation Department and the Development Services Department. So we went through a process, request for proposal, due diligence was done. Matrix Consulting Group was the company that was chosen, and they performed the study. And let me just have Alan just briefly go through the process that Matrix Consulting Group went through to give you additional background. And then Mayor, if you're okay to getting into the recommendations, what we're really interested in doing tonight is going through the recommendations and seeking council direction and approval on the recommendations that came out of the study. Alan, can you talk about the process that you went through briefly, and then you can answer questions related to that from the City Council?
Sure, absolutely. So the process that we went through was, we started with doing staff interviews. So we interviewed all the staff members. All the full-time staffs were involved in the areas under review, including Parks and Recreation, Public Works, you know, planning, building, et cetera, those two main departments. We did data collection to understand the service levels that you currently have and the approach that you use for providing services, the technology you use, operational practices. We provided an opportunity for each of the council members at the time to have a personal interview with us to provide input and their thoughts on issues to be addressed or things they wanted to ensure that we addressed as we went through the process. We did a best practices assessment, as you'll see in the report, where we compared current operational practices against recognized best practices in the public sector. We also did some comparative assessment to look at how staffing levels and budgets and position allocations with Los Alamos compared to some peer municipalities. We did online surveys, anonymous online surveys for all employees, so even though they had had a chance to interview with us, they had another chance for input to the anonymous survey. And we also provided an opportunity for each of the three commissions, the Recreation Parks and Cultural Arts Commission, the Traffic Commission, and the Planning Commission to weigh in to the study also. After those approaches were taken to gather information, we did our analysis and developed the reports and recommendations that are before you in the report tonight.
Good deal. So, and again, for people that might be watching on TV or in the audience, Alan, talk a little bit, well, let me just fill in the background. So we've tried to agendize this item a couple times. You flew in from out of state, and we wanted to try and give you a break, and that's why you're calling in this time, because third time is charm. So with that, I guess at this point, city manager, do you want to now lay out some of the findings of the report?
Yeah, I think if you look in your staff report, starting on page three of five, the recommendations that we want you to look at and have some discussion on and provide us direction with, I've circled the items, one through five on that first page, three of five, and then on the second page, seven, eight, and nine. These are all the recommendations from the Matrix study that are the high priority, immediate recommendations that we are recommending need to be done at this point. So we're seeking direction on that. We can go through in detail each of those items and have a discussion on that right now, and then take feedback from you and answer any questions if that will work with you.
Yeah, I think that, I'm sure there's some feedback from the council members, so we'll probably, I'd like to probably take these one by one if we could. So why don't we go ahead and start with item number one?
Okay, so Alan, can you summarize then, the one through, go through one through five and seven, eight, and nine? We can also discuss the other items that are longer-term priorities, but we want to go through those first and get direction.
Can I also, one other context, so the Finance Committee has been here, or the ad hoc group, so of Councilmember Chirko, Councilmember Hasselbrink. These items that have been in this report, let's talk just really quickly, the assumptions as we're getting ready to plan for the next fiscal year, for the budget that gets decided on for June 30th, for the next year, for starting July 1. How much of this is already in the budget for assumptions, just so we know if we're making decisions, we're actually making budget potential decisions down the road?
Yeah, we, the recommendation for the elimination of positions and the recommendation for reclassifications and new positions is included in the preliminary fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. And in the fiscal impact section, that is a total net of, I think it's $308,000 in savings ongoing and permanent because of the positions that would be eliminated, and then adding back the positions that have been identified that need to be critical positions added back so that we can keep the services going in each of the departments and in the organization as a whole.
Okay, so as we go through these, and the list dollar values, these are real dollars, and these top five that we want to talk through, these have been fully baked in with the dollar amounts that are talked about?
Yes.
Okay. From the ad hoc Finance Committee, before we get into the forest, anything you guys want to talk about from the highest level, observations?
No.
Okay, cool. Okay, so item number one, go ahead, Alan, if you can give us the overview of this. Alan, are you with us?
Yes, so the question I had is, I didn't hear Brett when you said the top five, the top five recommendations, are first five or the five from your agenda item?
The five from the agenda item, page three of five.
Okay, I'm just scrolling through that, sorry.
Sure.
I guess mine doesn't have a page number on it. Oh, page three or five, yes. So those items include a new department structure for recreation functions. What we've recommended here is the elimination of the director position and the maintenance of the two recreation managers as the leadership structure, and the elimination of the vacant position of secretary and the aquatics staff, which has already been implemented, that those should be permanently eliminated. This recommendation really came about as we were looking at your overall staffing, and you'll see elsewhere in the report. When we looked at the comparison of organizational structure to some peer entities, the majority of the other entities were not structured with a director and two managers. At best, they would have a director and one other manager, but the vast majority of them actually were led by a manager rather than a director-level position that reported to the city manager in other organizations. Given that, when we looked at this, this was the recommendation we made that we saw had the greatest cost savings for the organization without having an undue impact on operations. Along with that, though, in order to make that proposal work, recommendation two has a matrix in the report that outlines a significant reallocation of duties between positions to ensure that all the critical functions within recreation are covered and covered at an appropriate and high level. That includes moving some of the duties of the former director to the managers and others, and moving some of their former duties elsewhere in the organization. That does have a minor impact in terms of some positions that would need to be reclassified, and that includes a review of the salary for the recreation manager positions, a review of the recreation coordinator position, and some minor modifications on the part-time positions, and we have those costs outlined there. It's about twenty, it's about thirty, just around 30,000 that would have to be added back in from the savings of the eliminated position. We did recommend that you look longer term at doing a salary study for the recreation manager position to ensure that it's appropriately compensated for the market rate in the region so that you don't have potential loss of staff due to, you know, salary inconsistencies in the marketplace. And then the final one in this grouping is to establish a nonprofit recreation foundation to support the department in fundraising. While fundraising, as you know, is an important part of what they do to offset their costs, a nonprofit approach and a foundation approach sometimes will attract donors who are looking for tax deductibility and other things that you can't provide as a municipal organization. And all of these were identified as a high priority, and something that you should look at doing in the very short term.
Okay, so that was the five that the city manager talked about taking as a bunch. So let me stop there and bring it back to the council, and let's go ahead and start to take a look at it. And if you're going to go through, if you could just specify your focus on one thing or the entire package, just so everybody could kind of follow along. Councilmember Chirko, would you like to start?
Sure, and I'll start with number one, under administrative functions, on page three of five. My first comment is, as far as our Recreation Department, the report is very clear that they're doing an excellent job, and I just want to point that out and say thank you to them. Just one metric I'm looking at specifically on page 10 of the Matrix Consulting Group report shows that they are achieving, the department's achieving 60% cost recovery for services provided, which is better than the average, the average is 37%, and better than a lot of local communities as well. So it's clear we've got a good team here, and they're doing a really good job. And, you know, when I had my individual meeting, my main concern with all of these recommendations, number one was elimination of the director position. And, you know, I was initially, you know, opposed to the idea, having been on the Parks and Recreation Commission, but after meeting with the recreation managers, Ron and Emeline, and them providing sort of a, their view on the whole situation and work management, workflow, it provided me a lot of, at least, comfort initially. So I think, not to put them on the spot, but I think maybe if they could sort of give us their view on the proposed elimination of the director position, how they see that playing out, how their workload has been to date, and sort of give us their take, that would be helpful for all of us and for the public as well.
Sure, I guess I'll start. So Cory, our old director, left in approximately November, and I was actually on returning leave, so I did not start until January. So from November till January until I returned, Emeline was running the department by herself. And of course, when I came back in January, till currently, we're both co-directing the department. And my personal opinion is, yes, we are busy, we have a lot of work and meetings and things to do, but it's not overwhelming. We are moving forward, we are maintaining our current services, if not improving. And, you know, I could start listing a bunch of items that we've done in the past few months to, again, move the department forward, such as the new event that we're doing with the existing nonprofits around the community, the Serve Los Al. We've ran a spring carnival event in April that was, again, in my opinion, a success. We've done Race on the Base in February. Again, the bulk of the planning and implementation was done in December and January because of the lateness of obtaining our MOU with the base. So again, we did that without a director. So again, I think that we are moving forward, and I think we are doing well, and I think we're just going to continue to grow because a lot of our new staff that we have moved up to gain more responsibility will just gain more experience as we go on, moving forward.
And, good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. And I would like to also add that the visibility that we've been able to gain, sitting in the department head meetings and sitting at the city council meetings, just has really helped us grow and learn in the past six months, and really just put us at the table to really be able to make recommendations, direct recommendations that we can directly implement because, you know, there was no one to, I guess, tell us whether or not the information, provided us all the information that we needed, or, I know I'm not saying that correctly, but what I'm trying to say is kind of cut out the middleman, I guess. Not that Cory was bad, he was awesome, he was great, and the structure worked then. But for now, it's working really well with the direct communication with Brett, we're really working well together with him, and it's really helping our department advance forward. We've set a lot of goals and objectives that we're really excited about, really passionate about, we've got our team really motivated. We do need that full-time coordinator pretty bad because we have so much to accomplish, and we're really motivated to do it, but we do need all the tools and the resources that would equip us to do it well and not have any staff burnout and that type of thing. But we are really excited for the opportunity, we really thank you for giving us this opportunity over the last six months.
Great, thank you.
I guess just one, sort of cleanup question for city manager Plumlee. And I think we talked about this during my individual meeting, but under number one, it says we're going to, the recommendation is to eliminate a recreation coordinator position, but then when you go to number two, it says there's a recommendation for a recreation coordinator position in there. Can you just explain?
Yeah, and I appreciate your feedback. When we met one-on-one, we had Alan in there, and Emeline, and Ron, and myself, and you pointed that out at that time. Alan went and took that feedback and incorporated it into these recommendations in terms of, we're really just filling the vacant recreation coordinator position. And so what's, as Emeline points out, what's really needed, what we, they've identified, and I've identified, and I agree that they really need support from the bottom up. And so it's, it is a critical position. While the recreation, if the recreation director position is eliminated, it's really critical to fill that coordinator position. There's also a recommendation to bump up the existing recreation coordinator to a supervisor, which will help keep that person in the mix and keep that team rolling along. Because what I've observed is just, and Cory was outstanding, but as Emeline and Ron described, we have this direct communication, and I'm really having a lot of fun with it. I am not the director, I want to make it clear, I am not the recreation director, and I'm not planning on being the recreation director, but in terms of running the daily operations of the recreation department, they are doing that, and we're communicating on a regular basis. So the creativity, new ideas, things that they've come up with in the last six months, it's just been outstanding, it's just a breath of fresh air.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Councilmember Murphy?
Okay, Brett, could you expand a little further on your involvement? What's going to be your involvement?
It's not, it's not a lot different than it was when we had a director here before. And so I am working with them on a regular basis. We meet, I used to have a standing meeting every week, once a week with Cory, like in the previous director. I have a standing meeting with the two managers now, so we've just kept that rolling along. They, Cory, as the department head, would participate in our executive staff meeting every Tuesday at 9:30, and they are both at the table participating as running that department at the table with us. We have, so I was involved, equally involved with the Race on the Base and Fourth of July and the MOA that we've worked on over the last three years with Cory, as I am now with the two of them. So I'm not seeing a lot, I am not seeing, I'm not seeing an impact on me, I do see an impact on them because of the need for that recreation coordinator position to be filled. And I do see, I actually have seen a net increase in terms of the ideas and the things that they've come up with in the last six months.
Okay, you know, like Mark, I, when I saw no leader, my first thought was no way. I mean, I'm a firm believer that somebody's got to be in charge. However, I think if it does work, it's going to work here because we have exceptional people. We also have a unique situation of a married couple, so there's, there's going to be some synergy there, I think, you know, probably get more discussion than we would otherwise, you know, with two people who don't live together. But I also think that, so I'm willing to go ahead with, with trying this, as long as we have a way to come back to it someday. I think after some time, a leader may, may be obvious, you know, so that's my thought. I did notice one, Emeline said something that interested me, it's a little bit of an aside, but she mentioned how coming to the department meetings has kind of opened her eyes, and have you ever given any thought to have number two people from other departments maybe come along and sit silently to gain the experience?
Well, we do that in the police department, we started doing that when we had the reorganization to bring on the second captain, both captains and the chief are at the table as well. So we are, we've used that model, and it's worked well. It's not, in my opinion, we're not spending too much time on it, but it's good for understanding what everyone is working on, what all the departments are working on, what the city is doing as a whole, and it's really good for morale and camaraderie at the same time. And I think we've really developed a strong executive team, and we do have number twos at the table.
Okay, that's like the fourth idea I've given you this week that you're already on top of, so.
Well, it's valid to bring up, I wanted to also bring up, because we do have it in here as a recommendation, so Emeline and Ron, I mean, we, the recommendation is to look at the market in terms of the recreation manager, so we make, you know, we're trying to make sure that we're in the right marketplace for the two of them to continue to keep them interested in staying here with the city of Los Alamos.
Okay, one negative that I do see, and it, it has several factors because, you know, we've lost the pool. So I think Troy and I, on the Budget Committee last year, were very interested, what's happening to, you know, what changes are happening because of the pool. So what I'm going to say may be directly related to that, but it, it seems obvious to me that if we, if we can do without a director, we are probably overstaffed at some point. If the director leaves and we feel we don't need to replace him, we are probably overstaffed. And that's, so I think we need to be alert to that. I know things are still kind of shaken out with the pool and everything else, that we've, we have less to do, so maybe this is, maybe this accomplishes what Troy and I talked about in the first place, that you probably need less management over there.
Yeah, I think the timing of the director leaving, while it was at the time, you know, a hit, because he was fantastic, but the timing in terms of this study, it became fortunate timing. We were able to incorporate that in and analyze what that looks like without the director. So we also, as part of the elimination of the aquatics program, there's 3.2 full-time equivalent positions that were eliminated, so that's, those part-time positions are gone. And Ron, we try to do that on the one-on-one meetings that we had with the council, but why don't you just briefly, Ron, it would be worthwhile to talk about the role that the part-time staff plays in the Recreation and Cultural Arts Department in terms of the, you know, the staff, it provides staffing for all the events, and it's not that simple to just plug, unplug staff and eliminate, so.
Yeah, so currently, right now, we have approximately 45 part-time recreation leaders, and they, we've always said that they're the busy bees, they're the front line of our staff. They, they're, they're involved with everything that we do, from adult sports to youth sports to preschool to special events, senior lunch, day camp, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So what happened here is, on a year-round, 52-week basis, because a lot of our programs are seasonal, such as day camp, it's only a 10-week program, or this summer it's only seven weeks, the thing that gives, the program that gives them the hours on a 52-week yearly thing is adult sports, for instance, okay? So a lot of times, adult sports in terms of priority, in terms of when you talk about preschool kids, or seniors, or just regular adults, adults are kind of like the first one with the least priority. So if we, for instance, say, okay, we're going to get out of the adult sports business, then all those hours that are attached to the adult sports, from the site supervisor to the field prep, to the painting, et cetera, is eliminated, then we do not have enough hours, it's a domino effect, to give our currently 45, we're going to go up in the summer, but currently 45 rec leaders the hours to work. A lot, and you could see it, it was example with the pool. When we lost the lease with the pool, we didn't do the lifeguarding anymore. So all we did was just the coaching or the swim lessons, and a lot of the staff began to leave because there weren't enough hours, so they had to go get a second job, or they just totally left. And so if, again, going back to adult sports reference, if adult sports was eliminated, the bulk of the hours would be eliminated, a lot of the staff would leave because we wouldn't have enough hours to give them on a week-to-week basis, therefore, we would have a great deal of difficulty, the staff, our day camps in the summer, our special events, our senior lunch, our front desk operation, for instance. So basically, what we, I like to say is, when you think about possibly eliminating an event or a program, we have to think reality, what, what's going to happen down the line in terms of a domino effect.
Okay, thank you. Just to reiterate what Mark said about, we all recognize that, that we have exceptionally dedicated people who are doing this job. I know this can't be fun to be going through this type of review, but as, as a group, I think we all recognize the dedication and the hard work that goes into the events, and seeing you guys out there at, you know, the snow, snow event, setting up trash cans, you know, from directors setting up trash, people really work hard on the city, and we appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Yeah, a couple questions. Alan, I'm going to go back to your methodology first, just to get some clarifications, and some of this we've talked about in our one-on-ones. On the survey to the commissions, why was that sent anon, why was that anonymous?
Because in all the ones we do, whether it's employee or commission, we always connect an anonymous one so that people will be open and honest with us. Otherwise, you know, they won't share information that's important for us to know if they feel it would be disclosed publicly.
I understand the employees, because they're talking about their jobs and their future and their promotions and things, but the commissioners, I don't understand what they have to lose by not being anonymous.
Well, I can just tell you, in the decade I've done this with Matrix, we have never done one where we summarized it by individual identification. We've always done them anonymously and confidentially.
Okay, where are, where's the feedback, or where are the results from those surveys in the report?
There is a separate summary of those. The response rate was very low for the three surveys, and we extended the survey to prompt people to give them additional time, but the response rates are low. Brett does have a copy of the summaries of those.
Okay, and then where are the results of, just to summarize a version of council feedback?
In the same way, we met with each of you to get. In the same way, we met with each of you to get your thoughts and input as one additional way for us to understand what, what your concerns were, but those were not summarized for inclusion in the report in the same way. You know, the intent is, those are anonymous and confidential so that we can get the understanding of issues to evaluate, and then we need to make our professional and objective recommendation based upon the data that we get. So we did not summarize those to include in the report, or did we ever intend to.
Okay. Couple things. I'm, I'm a little concerned that the commission wasn't as, as involved as I think they should be. I pulled up what our commission, or at least our park and rec, what we charged them with, and it says it is responsibility for advising the city council in all matters pertaining to public recreation parks, including problems, relating to the development of recreational areas, facilities, programs, and services, formulating policies on recreational services, and programming yearly events. It seems in your report that they were just kind of an afterthought to be with all the other commission, commissions, and I just, you know, and even in your recommendations about some of the, not town hall meetings, but team meetings, they weren't even included in that. It was just councils. So council and staff, some, I'm not sure, where do you consider the value of the park and rec commission in this whole thing, since it's reorganizing something that they oversee?
Well, as my understanding is, they're an advisory board to you, but, but you and the manager are the ones responsible for overseeing this. We included them, the original scope in the RFP and our proposal did not have a survey for any of the commissions, and as we had started the process and were going through it, Brett and I talked about that, and we felt it would be beneficial to ensure they had direct input, and that's why we developed and implemented the surveys. So, you know, I think we, we provided an opportunity for them to have input into how well things were operating and give us that insight, and we took that into consideration, just like we did the feedback we received from each of you, and then based upon the other work we did and data collected, you know, developed the recommendations.
Well, I'm even asking about the recommendations in, in some of the follow-up meetings. Why wouldn't, why would not, why wouldn't the park and rec commission being included in some of those group meetings, talking about the park and rec department and its successes and obstacles and things? Why, why wouldn't that be part of the recommendation?
Part of a recommendation for, for you to implement moving forward, is that what you're asking? I'm sorry, I'm not understanding the question.
There, there's a couple of times in your recommendations that you talk about follow-up meetings with council and staff to kind of review things and looking forward. Why was not the commission involved in that?
Oh, it clearly could be as part of, as part of that general discussion, when we talk about, for example, staff should meet with the council to talk about, you know, programs and policies. It would be quite appropriate to have them involved in that discussion, as part of that overall discussion. I guess we, we were, we referenced it to the council as the ultimate decision-maker, but that would not preclude any of those commissions, if you're having a workshop or a discussion item on that, from participating in that, if that's, if you want their input on those operational issues.
Okay. On your recommendation number one, I want to go back to your presentation just a few minutes ago, when you said you surveyed other cities, and a lot of cities operate with two managers and no director, and they downsize the director position. I know this report, based on the original proposal and everything, was actually due to be completed in September, which means that our director still would have been here. If he would have still been here, would have you made the same recommendation to eliminate the director?
Great question. Obviously, in hindsight, I don't know if the recommendation would have been exactly the same, but I think what I can say definitively is, when we looked at the staffing levels with the other departments, you were overstaffed at the top on the recreation. So your director and two managers is not comparable to what others have. Every other community we looked at, including some that, that we didn't include because they weren't as directly comparable, for example, in La Palma, they have a director that oversees public works and recreation. So they don't have a, a dedicated director, and then recreation is handled by coordinator levels. In Seal Beach, it's overseen by a recreation manager position, so one, one manager position, not two. Some others, let's see here.
But Alan, I just, Alan, I under, I understand, yeah, I understand the.
So I think the end result of that is that we may have recommended, at, at a minimum, we would have recommended a director and one manager. We would have, we would have wanted to streamline the executive staffing. The difference is, when the manager, the director position did become vacant, and, and we were able to assess that as a sort of the current state at that point, and things were working well, and then when we looked at these other comparisons, it made more sense that if you're still able to provide a high level of service, and part of that may be to the fact, as was alluded to earlier, that your service mix has changed over the last year with aquatics and some other things having changed, that it made more sense to take as much advantage of the cost savings as possible, as long as that wasn't having a negative impact on your service delivery.
Okay. I mean, I understand that, it just didn't seem like we would need to hire a consultant to tell us to get rid of a director position when he just resigned. I, I just want to make sure that when you make this recommendation, that you're passionate about it, and whether or not there's somebody in that position or not, that is the absolute thing you need to do. And I'm not hearing that conviction from you, that if there was a director sitting in that seat, you would have made that same recommendation. I mean, because this is a, this is a big.
I may have, I may have. At the minimum, we would have told you, you, you were severely overstaffed in management for your rec department compared to any of the others. And with two managers or a director and a manager, you're probably still slightly top-heavy compared to those others. With that, it, I think we're very comfortable that this is the right approach to try, but in hindsight, I can't tell you what I might have said had that not occurred, but it, I think it's entirely appropriate based upon the comparisons to others, who are principally being led by a manager level, not a director.
Okay. All right, thank you. You know, and it's, I'm, you know, I met with Ron and Emlyn as well in our one-on-ones, and this is nothing about your, I mean, you guys are phenomenal. I mean, I've been at all the events that you guys have now led since our directors left, and they're flawless. So it's, it's truly not about your function, but we do a really good job up here about saying, how is this going to affect future councils? How is this going to affect future staff? And the word eliminate scares me to death, because look how long it took us to get another sworn captain back in. It took us years. And that word eliminate is scary, because we're basing our success on two individuals and not the overall structure of the department. So that's where I'm coming from, that right now, we're functioning great, but 10 years, 15 years, that eliminate thing is really scary to get back. As far as recommendation number, I can't see, five, with the, the nonprofit, this was something that I was very, very passionate about. I continue to hear, hear this from the park and rec department, is this was one of their main obstacles in being able to get sponsorships and fundraises, not being able to have a nonprofit. This, La Palma did, not the city of La Palma did it, but La Palma did it. They formed a nonprofit. It cost about $2,600 for them to get the attorney and do all the paperwork and file everything and get that 501(c)(3), and that's enabled them to do a number of fundraising, even in this past year, that they current, that they weren't able to do beforehand. They were able to bring back every 15 minutes, the school wasn't involved with that. So La Palma Community Foundation was able to now fund that because they were able to do fundraisers with nonprofit status. They were able to bring back, they have a program called Youth and Policing, where all sixth grade kids spend a six-week program with police officers in the community to learn about police officers and stuff. They weren't able to do that before, and now with this nonprofit, they, it just opened up another world to them. So that's something, I think that is definitely worth the price of getting, because I think it'll just remove an obstacle that I think they hear a lot of, well, we'd like to sponsor, but we really need that 501(c)(3). So, would that it?
Cool. Thank you. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you listen to the other council members talk, I do like the idea of flattening the organization in terms of trying to realize cost savings. I wasn't really considering what Councilmember Hasselbrink brought up about, once we eliminate the position of director, it will be hard to, I think, reinstate one. So that one, I think I am kind of thinking about future councils, how we deal with that. But that said, I think, I do appreciate the work that Emlyn and Ron, they do for the city. But I, I think what I'd like to challenge staff with, city manager, on, on this, and as a future metric, a cost recovery of 65, I understand, is excellent, but when you look at the service, the service we provide to the greater community, it's really costing the taxpayers of Los Alamos that 36% of, to make up the shortfall, as well as the future pension that we incur, the liability we incur. So I think that when we start looking at a cost recovery that may be in line with other cities, we have to really rationalize, is that the thing for us to do, to be kind of a donor, to provide recreation to outside, you know, those outside our city that come here and recreate, which is a good thing, but it's costing us, besides instant fiscal year money, it'll be future money as well that gets, you know, imputed into their pension. So I'd say, please keep an eye on the cost recovery, and I think that that should be an annual report for the budget committee, as well as this council. Because again, it's, it's a cost that, that we don't necessarily directly benefit from, but it's, it's a good thing for the, for the community and the surrounding residents. The part that, that kind of, I wasn't aware of on the nonprofit, I know you brought this up, that this came through the interviews with council members. So my thought, my, my question is, what is your thought on the nonprofit? How are you going to implement one? What's your timeline for such a thing? Because this is going to take a lot of work, a lot of heavy lifting, and the other part of it is, is the, kind of the control you give away, right, in terms of the funding and how that gets used, so.
Yeah, we, I'll start, and then I'll have Emlyn and then Ron talk about it. We've talked about this quite a bit. We're excited about that possibility, because it would provide a supplement to the staff. It will take a big effort on the front end to kind of get, as, you know, Councilmember Hasselbrink, and, and we've talked about these grassroots efforts, that we, we would need to identify leaders out there in our community that would be willing to be part of this foundation, as would be one of the first steps. But Emlyn, it's comparable to, I mean, Emlyn and Ron, kind of on their own, have come up with this organization of gathering all of the nonprofits together, called Serve Los Al, and that is starting to gain momentum, and they've done that in this, during this time, when they don't have a recreation coordinator that they need, and they're moving things forward in the department extremely well. So I have confidence that they would do it. I would help, staff would help, we would ask for the council to help. Shelley has a lot of really good ideas on this, and I think it would provide a great tool for us, especially once it's established, to be an arm, kind of like a police foundation, but be, be an arm of the city to provide funding for special events, and maybe relieve some of the fundraising efforts of staff. And also, if someone wants to contribute to a nonprofit, they would have that clear vehicle, and would be, as Shelley mentioned, would be more likely, I think, to contribute to this nonprofit foundation.
The thing that would worry me, though, expending, you know, taxpayer dollars, meaning paid staff to go work this, would not, probably not be appropriate, unless it's appropriated and clear up front, right, in terms of.
Well, once, let me have Emlyn then.
But hang on, hang on, I'm not done yet. So, and then, and the, the other part is, you know, there'll be bylaws that get established, right? The board that gets stood up, the whole corporation, it gets set up as a corporation, which is not a minor undertaking, right? So that part, I think I would really be interested to know how, but the worry I would have is that we ought not to be using city funds for that, right, to set up a separate corporation, unless, of course, this body goes and appropriates money and charters that to be created.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we would, we would try as quickly as we can to back ourselves out of it from providing the staff resources. I look at it, it's also kind of comparable to, I would like to, I'll bring it up as it's related, but like to someday work with the businesses along Los Al Boulevard to create a merchants association, and that, that's the type of thing where staff can start the energy and participate and sit at the meetings, and then hopefully that runs on its own eventually, and we can back out of it. So I see that as comparable to how this foundation hopefully would work. Emlyn?
I actually have some experience working in the city of La Mirada. I've worked there for five years prior to coming to Los Alamos, and they do have a community services foundation, and that foundation works, works hand-in-hand with the city. We are developing currently our partnership program that we're going to launch in the next couple of months, and that's going to be a comprehensive partnership program with all of our events and programs that will really outline, actually, recreation coordinator Megan Shimada, she started that partnership program from the city of Orange. And the city of Orange, I know this is kind of aside from the foundation, but the city of Orange has this partnership program that she established while she was there, and currently raises about over $100,000 just with this partnership program for the city. So we thought we could take this partnership program, work it with the foundation, so that there'd be direct correlation of what the marketing benefits would be for the businesses or organizations or donors. And hopefully, if we have really strong individuals that are representing the foundation, they can really work with the local businesses and, you know, not really start from scratch, and really just work with the current events that these businesses are already hosting, and we can all collaborate and work together, even with the nonprofits. So we just really, we have a goal of collaborating with everyone in the city, and I think that this would, this tool would really help us with everything that we're doing.
But in La Mirada, the foundation that's there is already established, correct? You're just participating. You're not, you didn't create it when you were there.
Correct. It was established.
That's the challenge, is getting one started and getting it created, and then doing it in a way that's, of course, not using city resources directly, maybe some support, I understand that, but that's the part that, you know, it's exciting. I'm not against it, but it's, you know, we've got to be careful how it gets started, because, you know, there'll be a clear delineation from the relationship of who does what, and.
Well, and then La Mirada, I know it's just La Mirada, but they, their city staff do sit at the board meetings, and they are liaisons on the board meetings.
And that might be baked into the bylaws of that foundation, which is fine. I'm not against that, but I think it's just, yeah, let's make sure that it's not totally organic out of the city. It's got to be, you know, kind of outside the city and stood up there, and I think there's a lot of energy, and, you know, in our community, there's a lot of really good people that can actually do that. So make sure that we understand our role, and then as the foundation might come together, the merchants association, that we're doing it correctly. Thanks, that's all.
Okay. So what I want to talk a little bit about is this process that we just went through. And so first of all, let's, I'm going to start by putting a couple pieces on the table, and then I'll pull it all together at the end. But first of all, Alan and the city manager, this item was an item that we had as an idea, so we engaged in a consulting agreement. And let's give a timeline of the consulting agreement. I want to push on a little bit what Councilmember Hasselbrink, I think her point is. So when was this approved? What was the amount, and what was the original duration that it was supposed to take?
Yeah, this started in discussions with the budget standing committee, when Mayor Edgar and Councilmember Murphy were on the standing committee at that time. We were, we discussed the vacant positions at that time. We discussed the upcoming budget gap for fiscal year 1718 coming up, and then staff and the standing committee at that time talked about, let's look at the entire organization. We have these vacant positions, we have a budget gap, we want to keep services going. Those two things are equally important, and that's when the idea started. Then in March, in the staff report, we had, in March of 2017, that's when the city issued a request for proposal for the organizational assessment. And then June 17th, 2017, that's when the city council approved an agreement with Matrix Consulting Group to do the organizational studies. So that was June 2017. That was, as Councilmember Hasselbrink, that was in the scope of the services, and Alan will back this, 10 weeks was the time period when it was supposed to have been completed. Alan can talk more about it, too. I know that they had one of their partners in the firm leave at that time, so that pushed them back. We had a couple of positions, directors that left at that time, right around that time, too. But that's kind of the timeline of June 2017 is when it was approved for a 10-week process, and it did take longer than that. And then, you know, then when we had it, March, had it on the agenda for the first time, March this year, and as you mentioned, Mayor Edgar, that got pushed back, the March meeting and the April meeting to today. So we tried to, we were going to have it on March, on May 21st, but we had this meeting, so we figured we put it on, so at least we can try to complete this. That's pretty much the timeline. Alan, you want to?
What was the cost total?
$39,000.
Okay. Yeah, Alan, any, respectfully, anything else you'd like to add?
I, I think Brett did a good summary of the overall timeframe. So we did, we did lose one of the key members of our team who left in late August, early September. We did then regroup to try to get this back on track. We finished the report early in the year, did a review with the council. did a review with the council, and I don't remember if it was late February or early March, but in the draft format before finalizing it to initially be scheduled for presentation on March 14th.
Okay. And then if I was to look at this, I'm in the consulting business, so if I was to look at this, how many equivalent heads over this? Is it approximately they're focused on this type of an assignment? Is it .5 over the 10 weeks, two?
Well, I could, well, I could tell you, forgive me a second, I could pull up the hours that we had allocated for this and answer that question. So we had, the proposal had about 250 hours allocated to it.
Okay. So a normal month would have 160, so it's about a person and a half, man month for-
In a man month, right.
Okay. So we had a partner leave in the middle of it, and so just, now that all those are at, the facts are on the table, so this is an item that we basically put on contract to be fair, June. And to be fair, because we've had a lot of distractions up to this point, we, let's just say, March, we were ready. In theory, this should have been done in probably mid-August, September, and it's, it's May now, but it's, let's say, March, so it's six to eight months later. And I think, for me, the challenge that I have with this is, you know, in consulting, if you just keep waiting, and let's just call it March, you'll always be right, because over time, things get sorted out one way or the other naturally. I, I would say that with this item as a process, to be just totally frank, as a, as a city, we poorly manage this contract. And Alan, I think, you know, if, how big is your firm? How many people do you have?
We have a total of 18 full-time.
Okay. So out of the 18 people, we had a hard time trying to find an extra half or one person to finish work that took us an extra six months. And through that process, as explained, we had a lot of organizational changes. And then over time, we just eventually get to the end of this, and it just so happens that what we have on staff, this, this consulting agreement or this consulting assessment actually just confirms we're in the right place by really kind of doing this. And I, so I, you know, I really don't, you know, I, to be fair, I don't give a lot of credibility to this process of where it's at. I think it started out with a good intention. It seems to be really well structured. The objectives were right on, but I think over time, and my experience doing this for 12 years, is that over time, whether you're at the city of Los Alamos, the Orange County Sand District, the Orange County Fire Authority, the Orange County, you know, any board of directors that we're on, over time, staff starts to become very heavily influenced, especially if you don't have a lot of direct consulting, because I don't think for the six months after it was done, you worked for free. I think, so the question I have is from November on, how much time did, did you spend between November and March in actually contributing to this, or did we really spread out, you know, a total amount of staff evaluation time over a six-month period? Because that would be like five hours, four hours a week, if that. So my question is, how much time between November and March did we spend?
I can't tell you the exact hours. I could get that for you very quickly, but all of that time was spent by me. So part of the issue, when we had the person who left, I was involved in the project from the beginning. He did most of, well, you met, those of you who are on the council met him, he interviewed each review. And so when that shift happened from November forward, I had done all the work on the project to bring it to completion. We had the draft completed in January, review provided to you for, for the council review in February in a draft format, and then finalized with your feedback for March. So, and then we had the, the expenses of the trips out there that unfortunately weren't as fruitful as we, everyone hoped. But if you wanted an estimate of hours, we could get that together for you. I just don't have time.
That's okay. And then city manager, was this a fixed price or time and materials?
The, not to exceed $39,000.
Okay. So was there direct billable hours by Alan on this contract?
Yeah, we've, we've paid on two invoices, and then there's two outstanding invoices.
Okay. So I, again, just to summarize this process, I, just frankly, I think as a city, and this goes to the bigger picture, this isn't now just looking at Parks and Recreation. This is looking at the city, the city manager specifically, are we managing contracts, and, or are we busy trying to shore up departments that are short-staffed or don't have the right mix of people? I get concerned that that is something that's going on here, is, you know, because a couple of things happen. We've got a contract that's not managed, and then we start having turnover, and then we've had turnover for three positions. We've had the Parks and Rec Director, which we haven't filled, but we got a consulting report that makes it okay. And then we have a Public Works person that has left, and we filled that interim with somebody that seems to be unbelievably good on a part-time basis. It's a retiree coming back for 20 hours a week, but that's not the permanent solution. You know, then as we kind of keep going through, we look through the finance role, and we've hired somebody, but we haven't permanently made that person our finance person. So either we're not sure or something. And, you know, my, my whole point for doing this is if we're going to slow this down, we have two options tonight. We just pass this report and say, hey, look, that was a good piece of work, and it substantiates where we're at, and it gives us a good bearing point. Quite honestly, we don't really have a lot of other options than to do what it's recommending, because that's what's baked into the budget at this point. I don't think that forgetting a director is the right thing, because I don't totally buy into the evaluation of the report, because I think if we waited, you know, three more months and Imlyn got tired of Ron and left, we would be okay with one more manager being here, because that was the right thing that this consulting report would say. So, so I'm gonna start there. The second part, just to get a little bit more technical on organizational development, is that, you know, let's talk a little bit about the Parks and Recreation Department. And, you know, for Ron and Imlyn, if you know the answers to this or not, but, you know, technically, the span of control that you would normally have in an organization, I don't care if it's Parks and Rec, or police, or, you know, or it's an industrial group out in a corporation, how many people do you guys, are you responsible for as direct reports to you, and how many people do you total, management, have a total management responsibility at this point? And Imlyn, I'll start with you.
How many do we currently have?
How many people report to you directly, and not Ron and you, but you directly, and how, and how many people do you have working for you?
I mean, that's kind of a hard question, because we do share a lot of staff. So we have the one full-time coordinator, and that's Megan Shimada, and then we have three part-time coordinators. We have a department secretary, and then currently we have 45 recreational staff.
Okay.
Part-time.
So 45 part-time, so probably two and a half equivalent heads and about 46 part-time people. Okay. So you have a lot going on in your side. Ron, what are you doing?
And that's shared.
I'm just joking.
Same number.
Okay. So see, that's what the challenge is, is I can't, I'm having a hard time differentiating between, you know, who, you know, look, Brett goes to bed at night knowing if he doesn't do the job, five of us are gonna hold him accountable, and there's no other explanation. But if Brett sits back and there's Brett, Wendy, and the chief, and they all had responsibility for the entire city, but there's a police problem, I would like to blame the chief, but I can't, because no one has taken responsibility for it. So I struggle with this at this point, because I would agree, and I'll come out of the chute saying, Ron and Imlyn, I've been working with you for many years. I, I think you guys do unbelievable stuff. I'm probably looking at it more from an organizational theory perspective, are we structured for the right way for the long term? For the short term, like I said, I'm not gonna fight it through this report, but I, I have concerns, bigger picture. The other question that I have is, and Alan, I would want you to weigh in on this. Look, this is a public meeting, and so we have to talk about hard things, too. You know, within our community, everybody knows Ron and, and Imlyn, because you're so involved in the community, but also everybody in the community knows that you guys are married. Some of us that work in Fortune 500 companies know that there's challenges when you put two married people working together. Let's openly talk about that. I guess, Alan, from your perspective, right on, what was your perspective? Did, is that something that you had to kind of take in consideration? Because at this point, I think the conflict you see in corporate America is that if one of them gets promoted, the other one needs to leave, because you really couldn't, shouldn't have a corporate relationship, where you have a husband and wife reporting to each other. And so I, and I worry about the longer-term impacts of their careers, if, if that is indeed something we need to worry about. So Alan, could you please, first of all, if you did not take it under consideration, then let's stop with you and go to Brett, but let's hear what you have to say.
Sure. So, I mean, we were well aware of that from the beginning. So obviously, yes, we discussed it on our project team, and we did take it into consideration in some respects. However, what we were tasked to do was to give, to make a recommendation on what we felt was an appropriate or the best organizational structure, and not who would be in those positions. So it made my task a little easier, because had we recommended a director and a manager, and you were in this situation, you had to choose, you would have to deal with the issue of one reporting to the other, which is typically prohibited in most organizations through different policies. But we didn't recommend that, but, but we didn't recommend it because they were married. That wasn't a factor in our evaluation.
No.
But we were cognizant of that.
Okay. And then just to kind of go back to complete the optics of that picture, can I just ask respectfully for each one of you to, you both are recreation managers, correct?
Correct.
And how, how many years have each of you been a recreation manager?
It's been five.
And six. This is our sixth year.
So you guys have been recreation managers together for six years. Okay. So, you know, like I said, I think longer term, mainly, I mean, on a professional basis, but even on a personal basis, we want the best for everybody in our organization. So it's hard for me to know that we're wiring this thing dependent on two people that actually should be promoted at some point, like fairly quickly, or they're, or we're gonna lose them, because they're gonna need to get promoted. And if not, it's gonna be the happiest group here, but they're gonna be stagnated. And then we're gonna get recommendations like the one I see in here, which is we need to do a evaluation of the salaries, which is kind of something, is a board member or a city council member is kind of telegraphing that there might be some future salary changes coming to, and sent them to stay longer. And then if you take Alan's perspective, that we are still a little heavy, even though we still have two managers, it would be hard for us to justify to the residents that we and are going to evaluate a higher salary, because we are a small city. So I, I think the optics on this start to show a problem. It's the same problem, quite honestly, that Councilmember Murphy and I had talked about when I was on the Ad Hoc Finance Committee, which was, you know, as soon as the pool started going south, and basically $1.5 million starts becoming in jeopardy, the span of control for a director becomes a question. So I, I'm struggling with whether we've done or didn't. And Brett, I'm gonna focus this on the city managers. I don't think the work is done here yet on what we need to do going forward. I think by default, we've fallen into this, and I think we need to figure out. I don't want Ron and Imlyn to go anywhere. I hope they stay another 10, 20 years, but I also personally want them to be promoted. I think, I see stuff in the community, if you talk to anybody in the community, they see the value of these two people. So I, I think we're running into a real problem, and I think it's a one to two years at max away. The other things that I want to talk about is that, you know, when, you know, we said, hey, it's great to have visibility to the executive committee. And, but I think we gotta be careful when we're a small city, because, you know, if you start inviting everybody in a plus ones, you know, you get the chief, the two captains, you get the two Parks and Recreation Directors, you get Dave Hunt and the city, pretty soon, you've got everybody in the city in a, you know, huge meeting that starts consuming time, and we aren't providing the services to people. I think the thought process, especially in a smaller city, is keep it lean at the top and try to kind of manage it through, you know. And so what I was hoping at some point, that we would talk, you know, if we're gonna consolidate and have executive staff, I think that that would be something that I would like to try and keep that group smaller. And Brett, I don't know if it's been distractions like this, with so many people now to manage, that it's causing you problems on staying on top of contracts like this, or hiring people, because you got so many people directly interfacing with you, that it's hard for you to be more strategic. Probably over and above that, I think getting out into the community, you know, I think that your job, too, is we need to get you more out into the community, and get you out there talking to people and being a part of that. And, and again, I wonder if some of that, because of the structure, is causing us to have to focus more inward than outward. And that's something you, whether you get it as a director in Parks and Recreation, or you get it in your job, somebody's got to get out there and, and be the face in a lot of different areas. And I'm not saying you're not doing a great job, especially like the county stuff, and you're involved in that, but I'm just saying, feedback that we get in the community is we want to see more, you know, city people out there, not just at the Parks and Rec events, but at, but at everything. The last thing that I want to comment on has to do with the nonprofits, and the nonprofit idea. And I'm probably gonna be up here by myself on this one, and I, I'm just gonna say it, and I'm hearing that there's probably more support for it, but I just want to kind of put it out there. Los Alamos, as a city, has had a terrible track record with setting up nonprofits. And so let's talk about the history. We had a nonprofit set up for LATV. You know, we're getting sued right now by the ACLU on behalf of another party. But the last time we met the ACLU was because we had a problem with our LATV TV station that was a nonprofit. It took us a year and a half to unwind that. What did we have? We had, we had board members that were fighting with each other. We had different philosophies, and quite honestly, it's, there's still sense and feelings of that still today. You know, the funding becomes a problem, especially sometimes we have to give funding into it to try to make things happen. Sometimes we have to, you know, see if there's funding there. And, and I, I would say that LATV has not been a good experience for us. I look at the Police Officers Association. I don't think that that is a disaster. Everybody loves to join it as a business person. Everybody gets a part of it. But city manager or, you know, captain, I don't, I mean, let's talk about that. It's a service, that organization really focuses on kind of the downsides of bad stuff happening to the police, and creating funds to be able to help our law enforcement folks if something happens. But it's not really something that we use to raise money for the city, or, and if it is, set me straight, I mean, are we using the POA organization to basically buy equipment, or supplies, or vehicles for the police? Is that what that organization's been set up for?
Well, it's different than the POA. So the POA is one of our bargaining groups. So the Police Foundation, if you're talking about-
I'm talking to Police Foundation.
Foundation.
Thank you for the correction.
Want to talk about any, we don't have one right now, but talk about interaction and-
What is the POA that's gonna have the event that just got scheduled, that everybody goes to, George leads it? What, what, that's what I'm talking about.
Right. That, that's the honorary association with, with the POA.
Okay.
They're, they're associated with the, the association of the police officers.
Legally or just at arms length? I mean, is the, is the, because one of the questions that was brought up is that, you know, do we, you know, those types of organizations are 501(c)3s, or 3 or 4s, and so I don't know, does that mean that we, as a city, are legally a part of that, or are they at arms length?
No, that, that's strictly a part of the, the Labor Association group with the POA. And, and they raise funds, like they, they raise funds for supporting if an officer's down, and it's for funds, let's say, for instance, in Signal Hill, they had an officer who was paralyzed due to an on-duty injury. Their, their honorary association raised funds to purchase like a vehicle for that officer. So it was more involved with the care of that officer in that regard.
Okay.
And that's different than, say, a police foundation, like the cities of, or just say the cities. The Cypress Police Department or has a foundation that is supporting the public safety needs and trying to supplement those things that are, would help public safety mission in their city. Seal Beach also does the same thing. That's something that we do not have here.
Okay. So I think what my example was, is where Mayor Portman Kusumato talks about the amount of effort to get something up and off the ground is pretty significant. Using the POA is the only thing I, the Police Officers Honorary Association is the only example I can think where it's at an arms length, doesn't really have police directly involved, but doesn't really have a mission for raising money for the city, but does raise money and is out there. The last one that I want to talk about is the Aquatic Foundation. So the Aquatic Foundation, it was founded sometime around 2003, and another disaster, that one was a real disaster. That one was formed, basically put a board together, and basically had some events, raised $50,000, and sat on it for 12 years, didn't make a distribution. At the very end, they made a distribution like their heroes and came in. By the way, at the time, the pool's almost ready to be decommissioned. So, you know, what we potentially create are competition for businesses or other philanthropists that are out there, that when we're writing checks to people, we need to kind of figure out. I get concerned that if we set up a foundation for our city to try and do this, it definitely is hard to differentiate between now that, that person out there is gonna have two people from us coming to them, because Ron and Imlyn can't just depend on that foundation. They still are gonna have to go hand to hand and out there, but they're not gonna do it as, in the name of the association or whatever it is we create. So this person now gets a second person focused on them, and then it, let's say they go, hey, you know, Brett, I like you, but I like Imlyn, too. I'm gonna give you- know, Brad, I like you, but I like Emlyn too. I'm going to give you $50 each. So now we've lost part of the, because some of it, we're going to lose control over. That board that's on there, that overhead that Mayor Protim Kusumoto talked about goes through. And if we have any sort of a situation where you have this tug of war of who's got to do what with the money, then it becomes highly unlikely that we're going to be able to really allocate that type of money. So we're going to work double hard to then have to come back inward to, to get this back online. The only model that I've seen that's worked in this community is life. And I know with Council Member Hasselbrink has been very focused and had a lot of interaction with that. And that's a good model. But I, again, I'm not going to give the history lesson of the school district and how that kind of came about. It is at a prime now. There's no doubt. They are doing really good. But God, it took a tremendous amount of effort. The last thing I would say about La Mirada, and it isn't about La Mirada specifically, but other cities that I'm involved with doing stuff, is usually these types of things start with somebody on the outside that has money and, and a start or a fund and tries to get something up and off the ground. And then it gets traction. And then as a city, we align or somebody aligns with it, but it's self-sustaining. So for example, St. Isidore, which I'm very, was very involved with, I didn't go over there and say, hey, let's start this St. Isidore Historical Foundation to save that building. That group worked for 12 years before I got involved. I just happened to be there at the end. That, that group though, still works unbelievable amount of time and, you know, is clawing it out. So I, I'm just putting it out there. I, I'm open and I'll probably be off the council long before that foundation gets going. I will go on the record, I'm not super supportive of doing that unless we really have a plan. And what the plan, the most important component would be to be able to see somebody from the community rise up and want to take this thing on as a mantle, because I struggle seeing, you know, us creating a competitor for the same dollar. So like I said, I, I feel we are where we're at with the staff report. I guess in kind of my conclusion, I don't think we, you know, we're backed up against the wall at this point. This is something that, you know, this seems like a good justification for what we're going to do, but I probably would not be leaning towards permanent anything here. I think this just justifies our budget position like we do every year with a presentation and what our rationale is. But I don't look at it as that strategic and I'm not really focused on that it gives me anything specific that I can hang my hat on. With that, I'm going to close and I'm going to open it up to the, the rest of the council and see if anybody's got any closing comments or what they would like to do moving forward.
I have a couple of questions and then a suggestion, but does, does the lack of a title of the director hurt our fundraising? Have we found any problems there? Not really.
In my opinion, no.
Okay. On page three, it was pointed out between numbers one and two, that number one says Recreation Coordinator eliminated, and then the other one filled. What was the result of that?
We have one vacant one. The recommendation is to fill the one vacant one.
So we'd have two.
Yeah. And the recommendation in the report is the one that is existing would be bumped up to the supervisor position. So we would have one coordinator and one supervisor and two managers.
Okay. When we were talking about other cities, do we review other cities in Orange County for their procedures in parks and recs? And, or is there a group we, we belong to that talks about best practices?
Yeah, we belong to California Park and Recreation Society, CPRS, and we meet with them on a regular basis in all of our areas.
And that's a sharing of ideas and what's working?
Correct.
Okay, good. On a personal note, I think it would have been worth our money to have the consultant fly out here. It would have been worth another $1,000 if we get to this situation again. I think he'd be more relevant, you know, if, if he was here. And if we do go ahead with the foundation plan, I think we're, we need some more discussion along the line of a, of what duties they would incur, what they would do, and then what the timelines would be. It's a little early to vote on that in my mind tonight. Now, the biggest problem, I almost hesitate to say this because I took seven o'clock in the pool for when we're going to leave, but three of us have indicated that this is not the long-term solution. And I kind of feel, the question I, I want to ask and don't want to ask is, what are we doing? What is the long-term solution? Shouldn't be, be working towards that. And I don't know if we even have the answers here today to, to do that. But I mean, the consultant even said we're, we're still a little heavy on the management side. I, I don't feel we're getting this right long-term. We're, we're getting it right for right now, but we're not. And I, unfortunately, I don't, I can't tell you we should do this, this, and this. It's, but I, I don't hear from any of us that this is, oh, this is, this is it. You know, this really, and I can see by the shaking of the heads that most people I think agree with that. But, so my, my question to my colleagues is long-term, how do, what do we do here? You know, how do we, how do we get this? I think Troy did an excellent job going out on a limb and laying out really the issues that, that we're going to face long-term. And thank you for that. But so my question to my colleagues, if anybody cares to answer is, if you agree with me, first of all, second of all, long-term, how do we continue this discussion and what do we need to do today? Okay?
Hold on a little bit. This is not our long-term thing because I don't know if we know what's going to work. Like I said earlier, we're basing this recommendation on two individuals and not the overall structure. A couple, not simple things, but I think it'll change kind of the intent. In the, in the first recommendation, instead of the director position should be eliminated, or rather just have it say frozen, because then it doesn't remove it from the org chart. If we eliminate it, it removes it from the org chart. And it's much harder to add that box back in. I also think that we need to redo reviews of how the structure, how the organization is functioning at the mid-level budget. So if we need to make any changes for the next year's budget, we've got about a six-month where we can find the money to reestablish a director or however. But I think we don't need to do it at budget time. We need to do it at the mid-year to see kind of how they're going, which will give us enough time to make some, some educated decisions. And then just real quick, getting back to the nonprofit, we do definitely need to do more homework on that. And I think we need to kind of, well, we, we, we need to communicate with First Life and kind of how they do it and how they're set up, but also with La Palma, because they did this within the last year. And I know Michelle Stagel ran it as a resident, not as her council, but she, she did assimilate a board and everything and they were able to do it within about six months. So I think that's a, a new, they established from having nothing into what they have with kind of a bleak, because this was before their sales tax increase went through. So I, I would just refer to them as far as kind of guidance of how they did it and how it looks and how the money exchanges hands and that type of thing. So that's my thoughts on those.
Cool.
So, yeah, I, I mean, I agree with, with what all of my colleagues on the council are saying. I think we're sort of where we're at with this agreement as, as the mayor indicated. And it may not be a, a permanent solution, but, but it is, I think, kind of the direction we're probably going to go. But maybe when we're voting, we could, we could leave off the nonprofit foundation for now, just a suggestion, and, and circle back to that later and also do periodic org chart and, and organizational reviews, maybe on a yearly basis and see where everyone's at and how things are working and operating to see what further actions we need to take and changes we need to make to get where we need to be.
Great. Thank you. Mayor Protim.
Thank you. So kind of my first reaction to Council Member Murphy's question, it kind of like is, how do you know when you're done? And I think with respect to organizations, there's always going to be change. And that's one of those things, the fascinating things about organizational constructs. But certainly I, I would like to be into a, get to a done state, but that may be kind of challenging. Maybe I think the thing that we ought to look at, kind of back to what I was saying a bit earlier on the rationalization of the services that we provide, such as the different classes that we offer. And I don't know what the process is, but if someone has an idea, I recall way back when my youngest son was maybe a year or two years old, and there was a class that was offered by Parks and Rec, having to do with cooking, using like Pillsbury dough. And he got to take that kind of class. But how do you rationalize that as a class to deliver to the residents and even the non-residents? Because at that time, we weren't even residents of the city. We were living in Long Beach in this service area. So there's a process there in which you decide to offer a class. I know you have space and facilities available, but those are the things I think we have to kind of look at. And that's a, certainly a load on you and, and your staff, right, to manage the booking and, and at times refunds when there's people that have to cancel, right? And that's, that's labor that, that we incur to, to, to do all that. So I think maybe that's a look at what, what are the core services that we want to provide, focus on those. And then what are the ancillary ones that we might want to do that are somewhat related to something? And then the ones that are out there, I mean, I, you know, I imagine the instructors are making money, right, off of their service, but then they're paying the rent, but then we're incurring labor costs to help book for them. And that's the part I think we ought to look at. And that's maybe, I don't know how much of that, you know, your staff.
It's a, it's a contract split, 65%, 35%.
Understand. So we earn 35%, but in, but, so you're recovering 65, 64%. So you're, you know, you're barely breaking even, right, on that? So do we really want to be in the business of making 35% on every dollar that you, that comes in, only to have a 64% recovery rate, right? That's kind of the rationalization. So because the longer term cost on that is your staff, you're managing the staff, and then the pension that builds up over, over time, right? So it may not be paid for today, but certainly 30, 40 years from now, we're, we're providing a service that we're going to be paying, future generations are going to be paying for the retirement. So that's the part where I really struggle with this, is that, yeah, it's fun to provide all this stuff, but is it really core to what we want to do? And that's, and I'm not trying to answer the question, but maybe that's one of the things is what are the core services that we want this organization to provide? And that's. Just real quick on that one, number six, while we're not highlighting, and then I also wanted to mention seven, eight, and nine, because that's on the development services side, but that we haven't talked about yet. But on six, the recommendation from the study is to, staff should conduct a workshop with the council to review the functioning of the department and identify the desires and the cost saving, kind of what both Mayor Edgar and Council Member Hasselbrink were talking about. And we do intend to go back at mid-year and review it with the council on an ongoing basis in terms of the organizational structure. And I, we could also, we have the Budget Standing Committee also as another vehicle, if the council is comfortable with us bouncing things off of the standing committee and then taking it to the council after that. We have that as a tool as well. So I wanted to mention that. But that workshop would be the evaluation of services and programs that we have and events that we have. And that discussion, that recommendation to come back in about a year. If I may, Mayor. So one, one other thought that I think with, what Council Member Churko had mentioned about the foundation of nonprofit, I think it is a bit premature, I think, looking at, in core services. Because to me, like, like a cooking class or a dance class, maybe that would be really something that a foundation could manage by just buying blocks of facility time from you and then renting it all out and managing the whole booking and everything. So again, I'm not trying to solve the problem, but I think, again, it's worthy of a future discussion and then bring it back to a, you know, would a foundation be able to manage? What we, what would we give up in terms of not having to, you know, book and then provide refunds, right, that, that goes through the finance department over here? So last thoughts. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Council Member Murphy, I, I really appreciate trying to bring this thing to a point too of, you know, it's easy to kind of just say, hey, where, where we're at. But the really harder question is where are we going? You know, and I, I don't know. I, I think I would agree with everybody, the nonprofit component of this. I also think that we do need to possibly look fairly quickly at the rest of the recommendations. There's up to 12 in total. And, but, you know, I think at the end of the day, it really, like, you look at Council Member Murphy, he's split it into two different areas. I mean, it's, we use this as a justification for where we're at budget-wise, but I'm not sure that we're giving tacit direction to implement new things that are in here. I, I think that, you know, and, and city manager, a question for you. You know, this is a organizational assessment, so this is not limited to just Parks and Rec. It's everything. It's the entire city. And I guess the question I have for you, you know, we go through an evaluation for yourself every year. Do you think that, would it be helpful for us to have a discussion or a workshop where we can set the priorities and goals and maybe move some of the other stuff out of your way? So that you, you know, because this really is the lifeblood of kind of where we're at. You know, you definitely have invested the time with the consultant and kind of talking out of both sides of my mouth, this actually might be your recommendation, not the consultant's or both or something. But, you know, to me, it just, I, I don't have any confidence in this. I, I've probably got to start a little bit further back. And I, you know, especially, especially looking at maybe the Ad Hoc Committee, the Budget Committee, like I liked your idea. But, but I guess the direct question is, do, would it be helpful to have a discussion to make sure? Because, you know, if you look at your goals and objectives, it's two or three pages of stuff versus strategically, this is one big thing. And I just wanted to get your feedback.
Sure. That would help in terms of council goals as a whole and incorporating it into the city manager goals so that we can have that discussion as part of an ongoing evaluation. Definitely it's, it's worthy.
So Council Member Murphy, I guess that's, I'm trying to think of it more, the bigger picture is maybe we start with the city manager working a little bit closer. We all start to gain a little bit more confidence in kind of where we're at and use this as a reference document. Is that kind of where you were heading?
Yeah, I.
Or were you trying to like actually use this to craft to a direction?
No, I, I don't see, I don't see how we're going to do that. That's, that's my basic problem.
Okay.
Is based on what's here, I don't see the solution popping out of here. So there's more work necessary. So I, in a way, I agree with you that this might lead us to, down the road to, to a solution. But I guess from, I wanted to say we, we can't stop here.
Yeah. And I guess what I'm trying to do is give some suggestions, a potential path, and definitely would appreciate if you wanted to, or anybody up here wanted to add more steps in that process. But I think a little bit of it is starting at the top with our city manager. Use the Budget Ad Hoc Committee to test the financial components of it. And then we can start to kind of go through. You know, when I get to that second page and I see, you know, number seven, as a part of the restructuring of Public Works operations, the state should permanently eliminate three current vacant positions, public work superintendent, the mechanic, and one maintenance worker. That sounds great, and that's a pretty big deduction. But that seems hard to be sustainable if we want to really keep our city beautiful and to keep the, everything kind of maintained. And maybe because I've lost confidence in this report where it does explain why that's a good thing, I just, I'm not there.
Alan, you want to briefly go into that since we haven't talked about that at all yet?
Yeah, I would like to do that, actually.
Sure, please.
Because there have been a few comments there. I think it's appropriate for me to respond to. So the, the next set of questions all deal with the Public Works Department. So just to clarify, this, this study was only limited to Parks and Recreation and, and the Community Services Department. It didn't look at the other administrative functions. So the, the recommendations that were brought for you tonight with a high recommendation for consideration in community services, does have some restructuring on public works. And let me start with the easy one, which is the mechanic position. An organization your size does not, with the equipment that you have, does not warrant two mechanics. If you don't have two mechanics, you're very limited to what you can do in-house in terms of its basic preventive maintenance and very limited and light other type of maintenance because for operational OSHA and safety reasons, there are certain things you can't do without two people present. So we strongly believe, after looking at the contract you put in place, that you should eliminate the mechanic position and contract that all out. What we identified as a principal issue, especially in public works, quite frankly, the planning of buildings seems to be working better. Those functions are entirely contracted out. But you have the ability through that contract to flex the resources that you need as you need them, when you need them, and only pay for what you need. And I think that's part of the reason it's working well. But what we also noticed on the public work side is there really weren't the systems in place for an effective asset management, maintenance management program within this, within the city to ensure that you are maintaining your facilities, your equipment and everything according to equipment standards and best practices. So I'm going to jump to 12 for a second, which is suggesting that you acquire some software to assist with that, a, a basic asset management and maintenance management system. And the proposed cost that we've provided to you of 50,000 is for the lower end of the range, but one that we think is, is fully capable of meeting your city's needs. As part of the recommendation to eliminate the mechanics position, we are suggesting that the police department will have to take on some role in. that the Police Department will have to take on some role in some very basic duties, but in terms of ensuring that their police fleet is being appropriately maintained, something that they've been doing, as I understand, in the interim. The big recommendation here for a new position is a Management Analyst position. When we really looked at what was going on in this department, there are a significant number of contracts covering a significant annual expenditure for core services that the Director was having to focus on or others, but it wasn't our primary duty. So we've really suggested a Management Analyst position to really manage those contracts effectively and to oversee the fleet operations in terms of ensuring everything is scheduled to be done as needed to maintain regular maintenance schedules, replacement cycles, et cetera. With that position added, we do believe it's sufficient and appropriate to eliminate the Public Works Superintendent and the Maintenance Worker. What we said, we're recommending elimination of them, what we've really done is reallocate the position titles because we're elevating a few positions up. So a Maintenance Foreman to a Lead Foreman, some senior maintenance workers up from Maintenance Workers to enable them to perform higher-level duties. So again, this is one where that position was vacant at the beginning of this. We had the opportunity to talk with staff about how well, when we say staff, I'm talking frontline staff, about how well things were working without that position. Quite frankly, it appears it's going very well, maybe better than it had been, but there was a significant lack of the planning and coordination of work, make both maintenance activities and the management of the contracts. And that's why we really decided, rather than having a Public Works dedicated position that was doing that, it could be better transferred to the Management Analyst position, who could take a much broader view and still meet that need. So those are the high recommended positions in this case. We have, there are some others you'll see in here for some other staff adjustments longer term, so we did look out beyond an immediate need. And one of those includes the, and I know this isn't a high priority, but it includes an entry-level engineer, since we do think that there's sufficient workload within the organization to warrant that and that it would provide greater number of hours to do the work, and it could be done, at least initially cost-neutral, from reductions in the current contracted engineering services. The reason we didn't make it high or an immediate response or recommendation is because of some uncertainties with the pension obligations that could be there long-term. So that's a quick overview of those recommendations of high priority on the Public Works operations.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody have any questions on those?
On number 12, Brett, we don't have any type of asset management system. How do we develop the CIP paperwork we get in the course of the year?
We do have, since our Secretary that's in the Development Services Director, Michelle Mueller, has started, she has developed spreadsheets that have helped organize the entire department and all the divisions. And as, you know, as Mayor Edgar's mentioning, we are very lean in all areas, and so we are, but we have such a team that works well together. And on the Development Services side, she's been able to incorporate spreadsheets, work order forms, departments are turning those in, it's helping to organize the Public Works crew that's out there, that they're working fantastic together. So we don't have a formal management, maintenance management system. This is one that's recommended in the medium to long-term.
Do, have we, in a sense, though, developed that at a necessity?
We have, I mean, we have spreadsheet, we've got our own fleet management that we've done with spreadsheets to track all of that and to centralize that as much as possible. I mean, the main reason for that, the critical need for that Management Analyst position is, while the Superintendent left almost two years ago now, and a Maintenance Worker left about around the same time period, the Superintendent position, as Alan mentioned, the duties that were in that Superintendent are being spread throughout the organization. That's the reason in number nine for the majority of the bumps up, the permanent bumps right now, they are getting justifiably so, they're working out of class, but they've taken on duties that the Superintendent used to do. The Management Analyst would kind of be the centralized point, reporting in Development Services, but also providing some ancillary services to all the departments. It's something that we really have needed, a critical position we really could use two in the organization. This is a time that is the right time with that Superintendent leaving, with the organization study being done, to bring a Management Analyst on. I mean, and if this gets approved, we would start the recruitment of that right away. We've, you know, I've wanted that for five years at this point.
How would, how was that person, were they going to report to?
They would report to Development Services Director. There, it's going to be, it needs to be, because of things like NPDS, critical functions that are Public Works mandatory requirements that are out there that, where we could be fined, we need to make sure we're, as much as possible, capturing that. And this Management Analyst position would provide that cohesiveness to capture all of that. I've talked, you know, Andy, our Interim Development Services Director, he's been here a total of almost three weeks at this point, and he's kind enough to come tonight to see this, so it's really too early to weigh in too much on it. But we've talked about during this transition time, bringing that person on and, you know, mentoring that person to help in the entire organization.
But that person, that Management Analyst position, that will be spread across the whole city, they'll...
Partly. It's, I mean, we even talked about, we need, like I said, we really need two Management Analysts citywide. We need someone to help with administrative functions and capture these things on a centralized basis citywide. So because we are focusing in on the two departments and because we have the vacant positions in Development Services and in Recreation, the time and the need is identified for that position to report directly to the Development Services Director. And I would say 90% of the functions are going to be in that department. There is that need because of the elimination of the three positions.
Okay, and then on number 11, are the police handling basic fleet duties now?
There is a role since the Superintendent left that the Police Department took on. I mean, it's just what we do in this organization. People wear multiple hats, they take it on with great attitudes without asking any questions. And Sean has taken on the primary role as the Captain and has been able to have others in the department assist. But Sean, can you speak to that in terms of your role?
Right. Most recently, in the purchasing and bidding for vehicles, that was something that had been done within Public Services before, that's something that we worked in conjunction with the remaining staff to accomplish. But also day-to-day maintenance, we, the Watch Commander plays a greater role in making sure that any maintenance needs are taken care of and coordinating with the Public Works staff who has been, you know, basically appointed as the primary contact for that. So it's just a matter of, you know, we've kept closer tabs on mileage and other mechanical needs. So that's largely where we've been involved. And as well as, like, information that Public Works needs for, and finance needs to manage the, what assets are tracked and so forth, that's something that we've been providing, which had been done previously by Public Works staff.
Okay, thank you. I think, I think the mayor hit upon it earlier, but your answers have kind of illuminated the need to reduce your goals and crystallize your goals. You know, we don't need three pages full of stuff, but we need laser focus on four or five items, I think, is what I'm seeing. Thank you.
Sure.
I've got a couple of questions. Alan, are you still with us?
I am.
Okay. I'm just going to answer, ask the same question I did with the Park and Rec side, that if there was a Public Works Superintendent sitting in the chair, would your recommendation still be to eliminate him?
Well, I believe it would.
And that position was already gone.
Again, at the management structures of other communities, there are many that have fewer management layers than you had here. What I, if we hadn't eliminated it, what would not be present is the elevation of these other positions. But what we feel is, with the addition of the Management Analyst position and some duties reallocated to those other positions, you've essentially switched out the Public Works Superintendent for the Management Analyst position. And we feel that with the work that you need to do, that's a better approach because it allows you to still get your core services for Public Works handled with the other staff that are there, but a much broader focus on contract management, which would now include fleet operations by one central person. And I think, I think that is something we felt was at risk and maybe not getting as much attention as it could because there just wasn't enough time.
Okay, because I'm hearing two different things, I'm hearing from you that we're overstaffed, and I'm hearing from our City Manager that we're too lean and we need additional bodies. So I'm just not, because this whole thing for recommendations seven through 12 is actually going to realize a net savings of $20,000.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that this is a long-term solution.
I think maybe you're not hearing too much of a difference. The difference is, we're, there are eliminations here, but I think what I heard the manager just say was, a different type of position was needed, that there's a need for more of the Management Analyst-type analytical abilities in the organization, and that wasn't present. And I think we achieved that through moving the Public Works to an Analyst position with this one, because then we could do it at a cost-neutral basis. The mechanic and the Maintenance Worker position would be, you know, complete savings.
Okay, and then the next question is more to staff on recommendation number 11. Is that truly a no-cost, or are we just shifting the cost over to the Police Department? Because I find it hard to believe that we had an extra person in the Police Department sitting around that's able to assume these responsibilities. It sounded like they were time-consuming because we had a person dedicated to it.
Yeah, they're time-consuming. Sean is the best one to be able to speak to the amount of time that has had to be spent on it.
If, are we talking about, like, the vehicle purchasing or just the day-to-day?
Just that whole recommendation of, you're now responsible for your own fleet maintenance and everything that goes with it, where we had a person dedicated to that, now all of a sudden, and there's no cost to it. I'm a firm believer that there's a cost to everything, whether it's a soft cost or a hard cost, and are we just transferring over? So now your budget's going to increase by either overtime, or you're now going to be short-staffed or whatever. I want to make sure that no cost, we understand what no cost is.
Right, there would be a cost with staff time, and really important, and perhaps the consultant, correct me if I'm wrong, what I read is, they were estimating perhaps five, five hours a week in management and so forth with this. So there would be staff time. And I think, even with the day-to-day maintenance, maybe not even quite that much time, the sergeants would be getting information from the officers, and we would have a dedicated, and we already have a dedicated sergeant who focuses on, on staff needs, they would just need to increase that by, you know, an hour to a week in order to accomplish that. So...
Okay, so there is a cost, it's just not a cost associated with Public Works, it's now just being shifted to the Police Department?
Correct, with staff time, yes.
And there's some cost in the Management Analyst, too, because we see the Management Analyst...
Right, but I'm not, I'm looking at something that says there's no cost.
By itself.
Just by itself, there's no cost to that, and that, anyway, okay, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. No questions?
One more. Are we budgeting for number seven at this point? Or are we already on the budget eliminated that?
Yeah, that's taken out of the budget right now.
Okay, so even though this shows a savings of 202, we've already baked that in, is that correct?
Yeah, it's been a savings. I mean, it helped us the last fiscal year as well. It was a savings when we went to the Standing Committee when you and Troy were on it. It's been baked in since that time. You know, as Shelley mentioned, the recommendation, like, for the Recreation Director, for example, is to eliminate, but you can achieve the budget savings and keep it frozen. And I had written down here, too, I mean, in terms of allowing for flexibility, you would have that opportunity as we continue to look at this at snapshots in time. You know, we have Imlyn and Ron and myself report back to the Standing Committee and to the council, how well is it going? What's happening? Is it working? And we would have that flexibility if we left that Recreation Director position vacant, just frozen.
You know, I think the mayor has, in previous meetings, started to bring this discussion up of long-term, where are we going to be, you know, what are we going to do, looking at this 10-year projection, which frankly scares me. I really think it's a matter of semantics, because these jobs aren't coming back. The only way we're going is smaller, you know, unless we hit the lottery. There's no, there's no...
I agree.
We're kidding ourselves that these are ever coming back. The more, the more the pension starts to weigh on us, we're going to have to keep cutting to make up for the pension. And I think as the mayor has started to try to educate the city, we need to educate the city that this 10-year projection's out there, and nobody's disagreeing with the numbers. So it's a wake-up call, in a way, and this, this conversation is unfortunately, probably going to be the first of many, you know, really, really is. And in that regard, it's great, because we do need to have this conversation. There's nothing easier than kicking the can down the road. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I guess the question on the table then would be, is this a receive-and-file, are we actually taking a vote?
Yeah, we're looking for a direction on these items, and I heard definitely a consensus on the one item with the nonprofit, table that and bring that back at another time. We can do additional research, we'll work with the city attorney, we can bring that to the Standing Committee and to the council eventually and take that off the table for now. But we are looking for a recommendation.
I'd like to try and motion, I have one more question. Can you live without 12, even though it's considered high?
12 is not budgeted right now. So as Shelley talked about, the net of those seven, eight, nine, 11, and 12, 12 is not budgeted. It's a, it's high priority, but it's not included in the budget. It's a 2019 recommendation, so it's not in the budget right now.
Okay.
So, yes.
Can I try a motion?
Sure. Either that or send me a text that you're moving your close time to 9:00 PM.
You know, as I told Wendy when we got here, you know, it used to be I would have been upset that Friday night was getting killed by a meeting, but now in my married state, this is actually considered excitement.
Welcome to the team, my friend.
Thank you very much.
We'll hug you later.
I feel good already. So I'd make a motion that we approve items one through five...
Not five.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one through four, and then seven, eight, nine, and 11.
Okay, so...
One to four.
One to four.
Seven, eight, nine, and 11.
And do you want to include in your, I'm just a suggestion, but include in your motion that, come back, because I've definitely heard the consensus, come back at snapshots in time, and that's what number six is intended to do, the workshop and the evaluation in about a year's period, but we can also do mid-year.
Yeah, I feel mid-year, I would feel better with mid-year. That was coming.
So Councilmember Murphy, the question I guess I have for you is, so I don't, I agree with the direction you're going. Are you approving these as really budget assumptions at this point, or are you declaring this, because some of these, you know, when we take markers off the board, they're off, like you said. And I probably will support it either way, but I just wanted to be clear, because I know staff sits back and they'll walk out of here going, okay, hey, they said cut, so this, this job's over. I'm just trying to see if you see that...
Would you have a, would you have one in question?
The one would be, as Councilmember Hasselbrink talked about, is if you, if you accept one, it says eliminate the Director position. If you want to leave flexibility, you, you take the budget savings, but you leave it as a frozen position.
I would do that with number seven as well, because it's eliminated as well.
Yes, you can do that with seven as well.
I can live with either one. I mean, to me, it's a matter of semantics.
Yeah.
But if we want to leave it there, that's fine. And I should add, I don't think we should incorporate three until we've done four. It seems like we're putting the cart before the horse on that. If you're going to do a salary study, there's no reason to give the raises before you do it.
Can I weigh in on that?
Sure.
I think number three is basically giving them raises for the work that they've already incurred with the Director being gone.
Yeah, exactly.
And then number four would be, in the future, to make sure that we keep up with the current market, to make sure that they're compensated accordingly. But right now, I think number three is just to catch up for their, their new responsibilities that they've been taking on as co-managers with no Director.
Yes.
That's how I understood it.
That's exactly correct.
However, my colleagues feel, and that one's fine with me.
Okay. Rich, are you good on this end of the table? I'm just going to move over.
Please.
Yeah. Mark, any comments? Are you okay directionally?
I'm okay.
Warren?
Yep, I don't know there's a second yet.
I'll go ahead and second that.
So can you restate the motion, just so it's clear?
It's to, it's to approve items one through four, and then seven, eight, nine, and 11.
So not two through four, and eight, nine, and 11, then I thought.
Just for clarification, if I could, please, are we also adding to this amendment that items number one and seven be modified to reflect a freeze of the position rather than an elimination?
Yes, that's what Shelley had added, yes.
Yeah, yes.
And, and did you want number six as a comeback? Because six is part of your motion as well. Six, just, six, the way I define it is a, allows for the staff to bring back points in time review of the organization.
To me, it's not as much as part of the motion, as something we'll give you direction to do, which is to come back at the mid-year and we'll revisit this problem. The others are more to do with salary-type things.
Okay. Okay, does everybody understand the motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All ready.
Can I add one more thing as far as number five with the nonprofit? Can we put that you come back to us in July? I mean, I want to put a date to it, so all of a sudden, we're six months into this, and oh yeah, whatever happened to that? I mean, at least explore it.
So addition, so that was the motion, but then the additional direction, come back in July on number five, come back periodically with snapshots in time on number six.
Right, and then also for number six, put on your calendar as far as review at mid-year for how we're doing, the state of park and rec type thing.
Right, if not, if not sooner, but yeah, the workshop, yes.
Good deal, thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Thank you, Ron and Emmeline, too, appreciate it. So at this point, what we're going to do is I'm going to ask the city attorney to move us into closed session. Before we go into closed session, I just want to ask, does anybody in the audience want to make any public comments, give us feedback for any of the items that's listed on the closed session docket for tonight? Just want to make sure if anybody has any comments. Okay.
Most of them are in.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure if you wanted to give us something to think about while we're in closed session, but we'll come back out and you'll have an opportunity when we take these on the consent calendar. Thank you.
I do have a concern.
Would you mind stepping up? Because I was hoping you would. Sure. And could you give me your name, just for the record?
Barbara Farrell, and I live in Los Alamos.
Sure. Hi, Barbara.
I read in the paper today that two of you would probably be going to Washington to aid in immigration discussions.
Yes.
So who's going to pay for that?
We haven't worked through that, we just got the invitation, so.
Okay.
We'll, we'll make sure that we let the public know, though. I think initially, we're probably personally paying for it. I think in longer term, if the city decides to reimburse us, that'll be their choice. We both travel for a living, so.
No, I went, you know, actually, and they usually will pay. You know, I did some substance abuse treatment meetings and conventions, and they give you a ticket and tell you how you're going to fly.
Oh, okay.
So I just wanted to make sure of that. I just wish I had a clearer idea of what you're going to present there on our behalf. So, because it doesn't appear to me that this country has a position overall on immigration. And I doubt that Los Alamos has its own format for immigration. It's a very big, big issue and lots of layers to it. So I would like to know, you know, what kind of presentation you might give that reflects our community.
Right.
So if you're going to discuss that, I'd appreciate that.
So Ms. Farrell, just to set the expectation, I really appreciate the question. For this portion, for the agenda items, we probably aren't going to talk about that tonight. You know, we definitely will, I'm sure, talk about it when we end up, you know, having our next council meeting, but tonight, we're really limited to the items that we're going into closed session.
You're going to talk about the lawsuit.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I have a personal interest in that.
Okay, would you like to share that with us at this point?
Well, I'm part of Los Alamos Community United.
Okay.
And the ACLU is representing us.
Right.
And some property owners, I'm a renter. So I kind of pay property taxes, but indirectly.
Sure.
So that's what I'm kind of interested in, what take, because you're getting up to a point where you're going to have to make a decision. The other thing that I'm concerned about is they have the GoFund, you have the GoFundMe page, and I'm not sure that a government entity can take anonymous gifts. Isn't there a daylight portion or a transparency issue there?
Yeah, like I said, that's not on the agenda, but, you know, if it's something that you're interested in, we could talk to you outside of this, but I appreciate you sharing your concern.
I did ask for a meeting with two of you, and I didn't get a response. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All ready, with that, city attorney, if you can take us into closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council will now adjourn into closed session to discuss the items listed as items 3A through 3D of your agenda.
Okay, great, thank you. We're in closed session. Call this meeting back to order. City attorney, if you can do the report out for closed session.
My pleasure. The city council has now reconvened from closed session with no reportable action being taken.
Great, thank you. Next up on the consent, next up is the consent calendar that we'd moved to the end of the meeting, since there's nobody in the audience, but I'll go ahead and ask, I'll open it up for public comment, seeing there's no in here, I'll go ahead and shut a public comment. Consent calendar has three items on there, A, B, and C, and I can have a motion to move the entire items or?
I'll second.
All ready, all in favor, say aye. Aye? All ready. That's all of our business to take care of tonight, and I'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting to our regular scheduled city council meeting on Monday, the?
21st.
21st.
What are you going to do next, Friday?
We could talk about that.
Yeah.
That's how we want it.